Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to open up the November 12, 2025 special town meeting. Bring it to order. First thing we're going to go over is safety in case of an emergency and we have to exit the building. Going to go back out the doors you came. Unfortunately, we can't go through the big doors, so we'll have to go down the hallway and exit that way. Or you can go out back, take a left, and there's some fire signs that way. That dumps you off into the very back of the parking lot. Everybody on stage here, if you use this side door, it brings you right out there, too. Okay, thank you. At this time, can we do the -- I'll stand and do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, and I want to let everyone know that the constable's return of the warrant was properly served. Mr. Constable Randy Brown. Okay, tonight, I am going to enact the three times up, two-minute rule. And at this time, can we just have a moment of silence for afflicted and recently departed residents? Thank you. Okay, thank you for that. All right, as you all know, did everyone get registered, voted? Did you all get a clicker? Okay, so, we're going to do -- the meeting's going to go the same way as normal, except for when it comes time to vote, I'm going to have to have Lisa in the back. She will have to activate the system for voting, so I'll have to give her a second to activate it, and then I'll tell you, you can vote, and you'll have 20 seconds to vote. Now, when you're using the clicker, don't press the yes or no. You have to press the green or the red for yes or no. That's what you press. You can change your vote. If you accidentally hit the wrong one and you want to change it, in that 20 seconds, you can hit the other one, and it will change the vote for you on your clicker. And please, just be careful with these things. They're $35 apiece. And just remember to turn them in at the end, that's all. And on the screen here, you'll see it as we go along. When we do vote, it will show -- it will show -- we're going to do a test question right now to check the clickers, so everybody can see that they're working. Hold on one second. Do you know how many people are actually present?
Sixty-five.
Okay, right now, I'm being told there's 65 people that have clickers, so that -- it could change. More people might show up, but -- so for now, we know we have 65. So the test question's going to be, are the Patriots going to win the Super Bowl this year? Hold on. Can you open it up? All right, you can vote now. Yes or no, please? And while you're voting, when you hit the button, if you look up in that little screen, it will say okay, and it will show a one that you did vote. Okay, I'm going to close voting. And what's our answer? Okay, on the very top, you see where it says rural majority. If it's a two-thirds vote, which we're going to have on the Article VII, it will show that. But most of these sites are all, except for that, are majority. So it shows green, meaning it passed, and you can see that 41 people voted yes, 23 voted no, for a total of 64, so someone didn't vote, which, if you don't vote, it's not going to show. Okay, I guess we're ready. We can go to Article One, please.
Mr. Moderator, Article One. To amend the bylaws regarding the audit submitted by the Select Board, a majority vote is required. I move that Chapter 28.8 of the general bylaws be deleted in its entirety. Section 28-8, the annual audit required. It's all stricken through, and this is a formality. This was the second part of a vote we took last May that was errantly omitted. So this is to repeal the outstanding section of the bylaw, since we're duplicating a state law.
Thank you. Advisory? Second, thank you.
Advisory recommends a yes vote by a vote of five to nothing.
Okay, does the Select Board have anything else to say on that before we open up for questions? Okay, I'm going to open the floor up for discussion on Article One. Questions, comments? Going once, going twice? Okay, we're going to go to vote. Just give me a second. Yes, I have it right here. Okay, you can begin voting, and there is a little timer down in the corner there that shows you. As you can see, we had 60 votes, 57 yes, three no. At the very top, you'll see that it was a majority vote, and it did in fact pass, so Article One passed at 6:07.
To amend a prior town meeting vote submitted by the Select Board, majority vote required. To see if the town will vote to amend Article 54 of the May 16, 2006 Annual Town Meeting by making certain deletions, the strike-through, and additions in bold. The composition of a committee. The Open Space Committee shall consist of five members appointed by the Select Board. Members shall serve a one-year term. Appointments will be made in June to start annually on July 1. The Open Space Committee may appoint associate members by majority vote of the committee at a monthly meeting. Associate members will hold no voting rights. All votes shall be considered passed and valid provided at least three members of the committee are present and a simple majority is attained. The Open Space Committee duties. The Open Space Committee shall be an advisory body and a resource to the Board of Selectmen and other town boards in carrying out the major goals outlined in the Templeton Open Space and Recreation Plan and revisiting the Templeton Open Space and Recreation Plan as needed to comply with federal and Commonwealth of Massachusetts requirements, guidelines. The committees will also provide a list of proposed candidates for the Open Space Committee to the Select Board, provide input to town boards on open space and natural resource manners, encourage the town to pursue state and federal programs and grants involving open space, work within the community to develop trails and educational programs to encourage natural resource protection and sustainable utilization, facilitate and/or participate in monitoring of protected lands and conservation restrictions, prepare a summary of activities for the Templeton Annual Report.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you.
The committee recommends a yes vote on Article Two by a vote of five to nothing.
Okay, Select Board have anything else to say on it before I open it up? Okay, I'm going to open up the floor to Article Two for questions and comments. Okay, questions, comments on Article Two? Going once, going twice? We're going to go to vote? Good? Yeah, go ahead and vote, please. Okay, as you can see, on Article Two, 62 yeses for a total of 62 people voted. That's a majority, so that passed unanimously at 7:11. Article Three, please.
Mr. Moderator, Article Three. CPA Funding for Memorial Congregational Church Exteria Submitted by the Community Preservation Committee, Majority Vote Required. I move to appropriate the sum of $15,500 and no cents for the below-mentioned project as follows. Memorial Congregational Church, $15,500. Memorial Congregational Church Exteria Historical. Providing funding to the Memorial Congregational Church in Ballinville to expend on CPC-eligible expenditures related to the preservation and/or rehabilitation of the exterior of the historical building on 16 Elm Street, and to meet said appropriations by a transfer of said sums from the Templeton Community Preservation Act Historical Reserve Fund, or take any other action related thereto.
Can I get a second? Someone say a second? Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Advisory?
The advisory committee recommends a yes vote on Article Three by a vote of four yes and one abstention.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to open up the floor to questions and comments on Article Three. Okay, going once, going twice? We're going to go to vote? You can start voting. Okay, Article Three, we can see up there, 56 yes, six no for a total of 62 people voting. It's a majority vote, so Article Three passed at 7:14. I'm sorry, six. My watch is screwed up. Article Four, please.
Mr. Moderator, Article Four. CPA Fund Funding for Grange Hall First Floor Kitchen Submitted by Community Preservation Committee, Majority Vote Required. I move to appropriate the sum of $20,000 and no cents for the below-mentioned project as follows. Narragansett Historical Society, $20,000. Grange Hall Kitchen Historical. Providing funding to the Narragansett Historical Society to expend on CPA-eligible expenditures related to the preservation and/or rehabilitation of the first floor and kitchen of the historical Grange Hall, 9 Hubbardston Road, and to meet said appropriation by a transfer of said sum from the Templeton Community Preservation Act Historical Reserve Fund. Public benefits to include no cost to residents of Templeton to access when the building is open to the public, or to take any other action related thereto.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Advisory?
The advisory committee recommends a yes vote on Article Four by a vote of three yes and two abstentions.
Okay, thank you. I'll open up the floor to questions and comments on Article Four.
Mike Constance, 674 South Road.
Go ahead, please.
Sorry?
Go ahead.
Yes, question is, why are we putting in a kitchen in a building that you can't even park there? It's, you know, we've been spending a lot of money on this building, and there's really no access for the town to be able to get there, to go to any activity if they wanted to have one.
Does anyone have any answer to that question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sue O'Coin, 21 Baptist Common. I'm also a member.
Can we have the mic?
Yes, well, probably because I'm so short. All right, so I'm a member of the historical society. There is a parking lot in the works right now. We also have some parking around back. You can park on Hubbardston Road, and there will be, if it's something that's a major function, then there's also parking at the museum and getting people down to the Grange and such. So there is parking. Now, the Grange can't hold, I think it's 100 people, Brian?
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's not like it's a function hall that would hold a lot of people anyway. But there is a parking lot in the works.
Okay, thank you for that answer. There any more questions or comments on Article Four? Okay, going once, going twice? We're going to go to vote on Article Four. And you can go ahead and vote now. Okay, voting has ended, and as you can see, there's 57 yeses, eight nos, for a total of 65 people voted. It was a majority vote on this, so Article Four passed at 6:18. Article Five, please.
Article Five. CPA Funding for Boynton Library Historic Rehabilitation Submitted by the Community Preservation Committee, Majority Vote Required. I move to appropriate the sum of $60,000 and no cents for the below-mentioned project as follows. Boynton Library Director and Trustees in the amount of $60,000 for the purpose of the Boynton Library Rehab. Provide -- is to provide funding for the Boynton Public Library Director and Trustees to expand CPA-eligible expenditures related to the preservation and/or rehabilitation of the historic Boynton Public Library, and to meet said appropriation by a transfer of said sum from the Templeton Community Preservation Act Undesignated Fund, or to take any other action related thereto.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Advisory?
Advisory Committee recommends a yes vote on Article Five by a vote of five to nothing.
Okay, I'll open up the floor to questions and comments on Article Five. Okay, going once, going twice? We're going to go to vote? Okay, you can please vote now. You can see the results, 64 to 1. It's a majority vote, so Article Five passed at 7:20. Article Six, please.
Mr. Moderator, Article Six. CPA Funding for Community Garden Expansion. Submitted by the Community Preservation Committee, Majority Vote Required. I move to appropriate the sum of $5,900 and no cents for the below-mentioned project as follows. Item agent to expand is the Templeton Agricultural Commission. The amount is $5,900. Purpose is community garden, and the CPA fund source is open space. Provide funding to the Templeton Agricultural Commission to expend on CPA-eligible expenditures related to the expansion of the community garden at the senior center, and to meet said appropriation by a transfer of said sum from the Templeton Community Preservation Act Open Space Reserve Fund, or take any other action thereto.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Advisory?
The advisory committee recommended a no vote on Article Six by a vote of five to nothing.
Okay, thank you. I'll open up the floor. Article Six, questions and comments?
See if I can do this without making a lot of noise. Oh, mercy. Good evening. My name is Carrie Novak, 186 Partridgeville Road, and I am the chairperson of the Agricultural Commission. It was the Agricultural Commission in Templeton that put forward this request through CPA funds for the open space, because it is an allowable use of open space funds. The project proposes 10 new raised beds made out of metal, not wood, each eight-foot by four feet with a two-foot depth on the town-owned land on the senior center property, and they will sit next to the five older wooden beds that were built many years ago. These original beds did work well, especially this year. A great deal of food was donated to the Templeton Food Pantry from crops grown on the existing beds. They're still being used, but they are deteriorating uneven and too few to meet the community interest. There's never really been a formal manager for the beds, and despite that, they did serve the residents, especially at the senior center, well. The goal of this proposal is to expand that success, provide safe, accessible, uniform raised beds, and create a program that the agricultural commission will formally oversee. The grant proposal consists of 10 uniform raised beds, lumber, soil, gravel, hardware, mulch, rain barrels, so forth. It's going to be volunteer construction with signup procedures, and full responsibility for maintenance and cleanup by the agricultural commission. No involvement is going to be required from the senior center staff. This expansion is seen as promoting sort of an intergenerational use by both the seniors at the center and community members, and can serve as a teaching opportunity for families who want to garden. I do recognize that the advisory committee is concerned about watering, and that is certainly one of the issues that I want to address. We are going to be mulching these beds to preserve moisture, and we're going to set up rain barrels. We're going to have a watering schedule. And obviously, if we have another year like this year, you know, that's going to be a concern that we're going to have to address. And what I want to emphasize is that this really is not a recreation of a failed project. The old bench, the old beds are deteriorating. The soil is kind of leaking through, and this is an intended and appropriate use of CPA open space funds. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Mary Enstrom, 49 Highland Avenue, Ballinville, Massachusetts. I think it's very wrong of the town to vote down on this. I have worked in those beds for a number of years. They are deteriorating. When they were in good condition, they supplied a lot of vegetables for the food pantry and other seniors in the community. I think we really need to invest in this. This is something that can help us next year and for many years in the future. Let's face it, everybody needs help at some time, and this community garden will help many, many people without having to go and say, oh, I need snap, or whatever. They can go and they can get their tomatoes, they can get their squash, they can get their lettuce. This is really something the town needs to back, and they need to back it now, where we have people that are willing to look into grants. Thank you.
Whatever you need to do, Beth.
All right, whoops, this is real steady. Anyway, I'm Beverly Bartolomeo. I live on South Road in Templeton. My husband has been a farmer his whole life, and so have I. We have a 30-foot greenhouse full of vegetable plants this year. The climate in New England is getting more and more difficult to grow. In May, we went to Rieta five times. For first three weeks, I told people I would not sell to them because it was so cold. They were putting, trying to put gardens in. You cannot do it Memorial Day weekend. Then we had the drought. We irrigated, we had 60 tomato plants. I supplied the senior center, the fruit pantry, and all of the town departments with tomatoes. We irrigated for two hours almost every day because it was so dry. You cannot mulch and keep a garden wet. It has to dry out, or you're going to get mold, and you'll get powdery mildew. You can buy a lot of food with $5,000. What my problem with this is that there is not a plan. I watched both of the meetings, and I didn't see a plan. I didn't see how many people were going to sign up. There is a food, a community garden in Athol, and I'll get the name of the lady for you because that's very successful. I gave plants many years to the senior center, and it didn't work, because you have to be there consistently. One year, they were going to have one lady that would come once a week. You cannot garden like that. Gardening is work. You can't take off and go away for four days. You know, I'm speaking as myself, but the advisory board, our job is to work for the people in this town, okay? So, oh, $6,000, $5,900, that is a lot of money. Once that money's gone, it may not come back, because we're not getting reimbursed like we were. And there may be a day we have nothing. Give me a plan, I'll be more than happy. Show me who's going to be in charge. We had people fighting up there. It didn't work. Those boxes are not on senior center property. According to one of our selectmen, who looks things up, they belong, they are on the property of the cemetery department. If you use rainwater, where's that coming from? You know? And if you do senior center water, their water bill is going to skyrocket. So show me who's going to do it. Show me a plan, and I will very gladly say yes, without any problem. I'll donate plants. How do you like that? But you're going to do better than you're doing, because it don't work. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, please.
Kenneth McClair, 64 Bridgetree, Ballinville. Several comments on this. So those beds have been volunteer-run for over a decade. Myself and my family have had their own hands in there. I fixed those beds myself years ago when no one else was there to do that. It has put a lot of food to the pantry. So in that proposal, they weren't asking for you guys to fund vegetables or any of that stuff. Currently, now, the senior center, we use the water to water those beds. And in past, we've used the cemetery water to water those beds. So as far as the water concern, with all the water main breaks that we've had at town, I feel like that's a moot point with the water issue. Until that is, you know, leaking all over town, I don't know why we're concerned about trying to provide for our families here in town, when I just, we just all voted on like $90,000 to preserve stuff here in town, but we're talking about spending to preserve stuff here in town, but we're talking about spending $6,000 on investing into the people of this town. So, I just really feel people should reconsider, you know, consider the vote of yes for this money considering the fact of, like I just said, how much money that we just agreed to spend on preserving things and updating things. And this is something that should be more community-involved. I encourage anyone in this room to sign up and be a part of that and to do the volunteer service in this town because, as you know, a lot of this town runs on volunteers, right? People in their free time, giving their effort for the better of their neighbor, and that was the whole point of why those beds were donated the first time around by the veterans' Because people haven't been able to take care of them because they're wood. They're made of KD lumber. They've been rotting for years, and like I said, I personally have went over there and fixed them myself in years past, and that's why they're looking to do the metal beds so we'd have something that we could use from here on out. I just hope anyone that's here, out of the 65 people voting, that you consider spending this $5,900 after we just agreed to spend over 90. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Terry Griffiths, 12 Dory Lane. I had originally asked Carrie if it could be the purview of the Agricultural Commission to have classes on gardening. Things don't always get passed down through the generations. There's an initiative in New England through a lot of the conservation commissions because we only grow 30% of our vegetables and we import the rest, but they would like to get it up to 50% by 2030. So, I would ask people to vote yes on this. Every year is different with gardening. I garden myself. I was taught by my father, and sometimes I have great luck with certain things, and it's always a learning curve for me every year with what I'm growing and knowledge, and I'd like to see that continue, and I do believe it will benefit the residents of Templeton. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, sir, please.
Tom Enstrom, 49 Highland Ave., Baldwinville. Listening to everybody around here, we're getting wrapped up on $5,900 like this other gentleman just said, and we've already spent over 80. The other part of this is not too many people have been talking about the people that need that money to grow their stuff, their veggies. Not everybody is financially solvent enough to spend money every week for food. And everybody's right to spend down here. Those are old beds. Time for an upgrade. Now, if we can spend $90,000 on making the town look better, why can't we spend $5,900 on helping the people that just voted all that in to be a little bit better, too? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, one last comment. I forgot to say. Terry Griffiths, 12 Dory Lane. Give a man a fish, you feed him for a day. Teach a man to fish, you feed him for a lifetime.
Okay. Thank you for that.
There is only one problem with all this. It is cheaper to go and buy vegetables from any of the guys selling them around here than it is to grow them. When you buy fertilizer, when you buy, we have heat, we have fertilizer, we have seeds. I paid 86 cents for one seed for a yellow grape tomato. Seeds are so costly, they're putting people out of business. So, it is fine to say, "Oh, we can grow stuff." No, you're not. You're just not saving any money growing things. Go down to Valcourt's, and you can buy stuff cheaper. You can take that $5,000, and you could feed half the damn town if you go down the valley with a truck. So, what I'm worried about is spending CPA money and then having those sit there and rot because nobody's going to do it. Give me a list. Show me who's going to do it. Show me there's going to be a use. I heard two people were interested. You have a whole yard. Why don't you do it in your yard? You're across the street. I mean, think about it. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense. That's all. It's just trying to be frugal. There's a whole lot of people in town that aren't here. That's their fault, okay? Do what you want, but I don't want to end up having to pay somebody to take everything down and clean it up.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Kenneth McClure, Bridgetree. Bev, I respect you very, very much, and I appreciate the tanninial plants that I got for you this summer for my family. So, I would tell you five people that'll help with that. You want to, I'm just, it hasn't had a plan this whole time, and yet it's continued, and I totally agree. I don't have chickens. I don't have chickens for the eggs. I'll tell you that right now. 10 years ago, 11 years ago, when I first got chickens, yes, I did it for the eggs. Guess what? It's not about the eggs. It's about the therapy of the birds, okay? So, and as far as you're worried about who's going to take care of it and the cost of the seed, it's not about that. It's about people helping other people together from small to big. If you go, and my three boys were here with me tonight, they could tell you how to plant that garden because they've worked it with me since the day they were born in their bare feet with black gold from Smith Country Cheese, okay? Just like my dad taught me in that same plot of land. You know I have a garden. That's why you just said that. And it's about that, that I am lucky enough and to have the skill and the green thumb in my family to do that. Not everybody has that opportunity. Not everybody has that yard. We got this massive housing going on at the top of the hill in the old school. What about those people? There's no garden there for them, right? We have to think about, it's not just about the cost of it. It's no cost to town after the initial beds. It's always been volunteer-planted, volunteer-donated, and that's how it survives. So, it's not like it's a continuing cost to town besides the water, which I understand that portion. And I would, again, sit here and encourage everyone in this room and anyone else that's going to watch this video to get involved with the volunteer aspect of that because that's what that is about, right? That's the whole point of the open space.
Okay.
And we'll take any plants that you plan on growing this year.
All right. Any more questions or comments on Article Six? Going once, going twice. Okay, we're going to go to vote on Article Six. You can start voting now, please. As you can see, voting has ended. We have 57 yes, 10 no. It's a majority vote, so Article Six passed at 6:38. Article Seven? Does anyone have Article Seven to present?
I would like to make a motion to Jennifer Smith, 138 Farnsworth Row, Templeton. I would like to move to amend Article Seven by striking the article's text in its entirety and replacing it.
You have to present.
I have to present it first.
Original article, and then you can amend it.
All right. To see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of $12,886,811 in no sense for the purpose of rehabilitation of an arrogance of middle school, including all incidental and related expenses, and to meet said appropriation, to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow such sum under and consistent with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other source of authority, said amount contingent upon passage of a Proposition Two and a Half debt exclusion ballot question in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21 CK, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and that any federal or state grants awarded prior to issuance of bonds will be used to reduce the amount borrowed by the town of Templeton.
Okay. Can I get a second? Okay, I'm going to need that in writing and signed.
Why do I have to give you the original? The original's on the town warrant.
You need a pen and pen?
Yeah.
Second. Thank you. Advisory?
Going to speak a little bit longer than usual. Can everybody hear me? All right. This is a split vote on the part of advisory. There was one member who voted against this and four members who voted in favor of this. The one vote against, we recorded one vote, and I'd like to read the statement of the person who voted against this. "We recorded one vote against based on how the article was presented by the school. It implied that Templeton taxpayers would not incur the debt when, in fact, they will experience a tax increase for a set period to cover the assessment. The reviewer also believed that more than one quote should have been obtained and expressed concern that Phillipsen may not pay its share under the current outdated regional agreement." The four members voted in favor of this, and there will be discussion, but I would like to make five points, which I believe my fellow members who voted in favor of this article expressed, is number one, the roof needs to be fixed. Number two, there were nearly 150 applicants for state reimbursement of several million dollars. Out of the 150 applicants or so, there were 93 successful applicants. So, you just don't apply for the money and automatically get it. If the vote fails tonight, it will be very costly to the town of Templeton. You will not be able to obtain state funding for at least two years because these funds only become available every two years, and you would have to apply all over again. And in two years, the cost of the roof may go up substantially. And also, the 59% grant that you may hear about, that amount could very well go down because of the change in the fiscal climate of the state.
Okay. At this time, I'll open up the floor. Questions, comments on Article Seven?
Mr. Moderator, Jennifer Smith, 138 Farnsworth Row, Templeton. I move to amend Article Seven by striking the article's text in its entirety and replacing it with the language I have ready to submit in writing.
Okay. I'm going to take a vote on that. I'll take a copy of that. Jennifer Smith, are you out there? Where'd you go? Oh. Can you come up here, please? Yeah, could you please come up here for a second? Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Go ahead, please.
Hello, Jennifer Smith, 138 Farnsworth Road. I would like to withdraw my original motion-
Okay.
-and replace it with a motion to amend the article by striking, to amend the, sorry, motion by striking the main motion and, in its entirety, and substituting it with the following: That the town hereby approves the $10,864,548 borrowing authorized by the Narragansett Regional School District, the district, for the purpose of paying construction costs related to a potential accelerated repair project involving the Narragansett Regional High School MSBA ARP Full Roof Replacement Project, $9,176,314, located at 464 Baldwinville Road, Baldwinville, Mass., and the Narragansett Regional Middle School MSBA ARP Partial Roof Replacement Project, $1,688,234, located at 460 Baldwinville Road, Baldwinville, Mass. Including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto the project, which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA, said amount to be expended at the direction of the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee, that the town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project costs the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities, provided that the approval of the district's borrowing by this vote shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt its allocable share of the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitations on taxes imposed by Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), the Proposition 2.5 dot exclusion, and that the amount of borrowing authorized by the district shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA.
Can I get a second? Thank you. All right, I think I'll open up the floor to questions and comments on Article 7.
Terry Griffiths, 12 Dory Lane. So, um, it's a little clearer on that, um, reading the amendment, but what I don't understand is, is there Phillips, I've watched the school committee, I've watched the advisory, I've heard the presentations, I know Phillipson has a portion, but what I'm confused about is, is it all on the town? And when you say district, there's district, there's the town, and then there's Phillipson. And I'm not clear of the breakdown of those three entities.
Okay, anyone have an answer to that question? Go ahead, please.
Jennifer Smith, Templeton. So, the way that this would break down is that the buildings are supported by the towns and then, so essentially what happens is MSBA will reimburse at a rate of 59 percent. So, they're covering 60 percent of the costs, which is about 60 percent of the cost, which is $6,116,95. The remaining local cost would then be $4,752,853, and the district would issue a 20-year bond, so the district would take on the debt and then charge it back to the towns. The estimated cost of the bond principal and interest would be about $7,57471, to which Templeton would then be responsible for 85 percent and Phillipson 15 percent.
Okay, go ahead, please.
April Covert, 24 Meadowbrook Lane. I am speaking as a citizen, not a member of the advisory. In her motion, she stated that the state may reimburse the town 59 percent. Those funds are not guaranteed. My other concern is the fact that we do not have an updated regional agreement with the town of Phillipson. And then, my third concern is the fact that I understand that, has there been more than one quote received or is it just that one quote that you have?
Someone have an answer to that? Go ahead, please. Well, he's, he's speaking as the superintendent, I believe, correct? So, that's like-
That's the only thing I am, yeah.
I don't think we actually have to, right? Yeah, you go ahead, please. Name and title.
Chris Cassin, Superintendent of Schools, thank you. First, we have our owner, project manager, who can really speak to the technical pieces to the MSBA. The 59 percent is locked in, reimbursement, ineligible costs. So, I just want to make sure, and he, certainly John, can go into that. I'm sorry? Well, because they're not going to say until the votes, until both towns have voted affirmatively. So, they're not gonna say they're gonna give you 59 percent of X until both towns take on the debt, or at least vote for the debt. Secondly, I just want to talk about the regional agreement. Absolutely, everyone knows about the regional agreement. We've talked about the regional agreement a lot. The 1977 regional agreement is in fact in place. As it, as it talked about capital costs, it has not changed since 1950, whatever. It's 85-15 in the 1977 regional agreement in terms of how costs are appropriate, apportioned, pardon me.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please.
Do I need to state my address again?
You can just say your name, that's all you have to do. After, once you've been up and gave your address, we're good with that.
The outdated regional agreement may be in place for the high school and middle school, but it does not include the elementary school in which the Templeton taxpayers are fully funding.
Does anyone have an answer to that? Go ahead, please.
Chris Cassin, Superintendent. Absolutely true that the regional is made up of the middle and high school, but I will say that Phillipson pays 15 percent of the bills, right? So, they do in fact pay 15 percent currently at this time. If, if the will of this community someday wants to amend that agreement, we've already gone down that road, we know what needs to happen, but in terms of who pays what, Templeton pays 85 percent and Phillipson pays 15 percent.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please.
Mary Anstrom. You know, this town needs to wake up. We talk and we talk and we talk. The senior center waited so long to get a roof, we literally had a child's swimming pool in the dining room collecting water, okay? Let's not do that to our students. We don't want our students coming with raincoats because there's water dripping in on them. Whether or not we feel that, you know, the 80-15 split is good, that's what stands now. Let's vote to get this roof done before it costs us more money. I'm not thrilled that my taxes are gonna go up $100 a year, but you know what? We don't get it now and we don't get the funding from the state, you're talking paying $200 a year, $300 a year. Let's look forward and pass this and get it done so the kids aren't wearing raincoats.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more questions or comments on Article 7? Okay. Go ahead, please.
John Thomas, Cross Road. It does seem like this is an awful lot of money for a roof, and I haven't been able to follow all of the discussions and information, but I do feel we have an obligation to take care and maintain our structures. So, I think we do have to vote for this, but there's not an awful lot of people in this room and it's gonna have to go to the ballot. And I'd like to know from the selectmen and the superintendent or school committee, what can be done to educate the public so that we can vote for this as a community? Because, you know, I almost expected a slick PowerPoint presentation of, this is why we need to spend $10 million. And I've heard snippets, and if you go to the meetings, you might absorb a little more, but there's a lot of people that are gonna vote and they're not privy to all this information or they haven't dug it out. So, my question is, how do we educate those people? It's our building. How do we maintain it? Do the selectmen have a presentation for the town?
Ms. Moderator, Jeff Bennett. Ms. Thomas, there is not a presentation at the current moment. There certainly can be one on TCTV, and I hear your concerns about the lack of people at town meeting. We can put out all the information possible, but we can't force people to come to town meeting. We have tried Saturdays, we have tried later start times. We can put the information out. The select board meetings, the school committee meetings were recorded and they're on YouTube. I saw a lot of people talking about this on Facebook, but I don't see them here. And again, back in 1996, you can, it's, this is on the Templeton's website, we spent 20 million and some change to build that building, and now it's 10 million for a roof 30 years later. I don't know why it costs that much. There's a lot of different laws and purchasing and you have to pay so much an hour to work and all this stuff. You and I could probably do this, the same building, just ourselves. You know, if you owned it or I owned it, it would be cheaper, but it's the state purchasing and all of that stuff. We can try, we can have TCTV, you know, the school committee person, chair, the superintendent, the town administrator, some select board members, we could do with TCTV presentations, but again, we can't force people to get to town meeting. I've tried so many different ways over the years, get them upset, get them mad, give them all the facts, the information, it just, but here we are. I, I hear your concerns, it's so few people voting to spend, you know, approved borrowing of $10,800,000. It's, if you look back at 2015, when we voted to build a new elementary school with $47 million appropriated, you know, a few hundred people there out of 4,000, 5,000 registered voters. If anyone out here has suggestions, I'm glad to hear them, but again, we, we can't pass up, and if the 47 million, 45 million was spent and 22 million came from MSBA. That's the amount of money that the taxpayers of two towns, or Templeton, rather, did not have to pay. And in this case, it would be two towns, you know, not paying the full price. I just, I wish I had a better answer for you, sir, but we can, we can do TCTV presentations between, after tonight, if it passes, we're gonna have to have a special election for a ballot, we can put out information and try. But that's, you know, that's all we can do is try. We can give you the information, but again, it is frustrating, this, this place should be full. We should have overflow in the gym for this, this project, but that's the best that I can tell you, Mr. Thomas. And I, I do, I get your point, I get your concern, but we, we just can't force people to come here, and it's a shame.
Okay, thank you for that.
Can I respond?
Yeah, go ahead, you have another question, a follow-up?
Yes, I understand, I think I understand what you were saying, and I'm not faulting the board at all for the lack of people in this room, but what I did not see tonight was a presentation by the select board that said, these are the bullet points, this is why we need to vote for this. I didn't hear anyone from the select board say, this is the information and this is what you have to do. And I guess, I hope that you can put something on the TV or the website and the people will understand it and be more informed, but I thought today there would have been information presented by the select board and/or the superintendent that would inform everyone. And there is a sheet, but it wasn't even discussed. There's a sheet and it's cryptic notes, and if you understand it, and I, I think everyone in this room's gonna vote for it. It's not these people I'm concerned about, it's the ones that are gonna be at, the ones that are gonna be at the ballot box. We have to draw them in.
Okay, go ahead, Liz.
Liz Toth, Gray Road. I'm speaking as an individual and not a member of advisory. You know, I truly believe we need to get this done. It has never been a problem for Templeton in a town meeting to vote in favor of these types of articles. It is a problem when it gets to the ballot box. I am super surprised that the school committee does not have a slew of parents here tonight. I am exceptionally disappointed in that, and I would like to know what the school committee is going to do to get their parents out to vote for this because otherwise, it will fail at the ballot box. Even though it is needed, it is a no kidding, really common sense thing to do, there'll be enough people that will vote against it. I'd like to know what your plan is. Thank you.
Okay, do you have an answer to that?
Do my best. Jennifer Smith. I'm also the Chair of the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee, in case you haven't figured that out by now. So, what we can do to raise awareness and try to collect votes is actually limited by law. We cannot use any school funds, so that includes using school newsletters, it includes using all those usual communications that get to parents. We are not, we are legally not allowed to use those spaces to raise awareness for things, especially when it comes to a vote. So, you're right, I mean, our, our options are limited, which is why we invest a lot of- right. I mean, our options are limited, which is why we invest a lot of time and energy into presenting to the select board and to sharing this information in our school committee meetings, but then that's limited to who attends those. We do our best to mitigate that by me taking my unpaid labor and posting on Facebook so that I can at least raise some awareness, and I will continue to do that and raise awareness to the, to the, you know, the fact that there will be a ballot, and this is what it is, and this is what it means, and this is what a yes vote means, and this is what a no vote means. But I can't advocate for one vote one way or the other. All I can do is educate on what the vote is, what it means, and what the options are.
Beverly Bartolomeo, South Road, Templeton. I think that when people look at big numbers, they get scared. And there are a lot of elderly people in this town that don't have a lot of money because we never made any money. And there are younger people that are struggling. I have neighbors that have four kids, five kids, and their house payment, car payments, they're never, never home because they're always on the road. They're working all the time. I think that if the selectmen and the school committee, they know what the numbers are now, can show people that the impact isn't going to be that great. I think that will help a lot. When you look at these big numbers, it is scary. I've stood in a cafeteria with water running down the ceiling at a craft show. My friend Marsha set up that one year. It isn't fun. And if we get bold and we have bigger problems, we're going to be up the creek without the paddle of the boat. So we have to vote for this because MSBA is, is really, really covering our backside. This town has got a lot of work to do. We have to figure something out because half the people in town are on Route Two or Four-Ninety-Five at six o'clock at night. So to say, get people here, it's easier said than done. It really is. And new people, I bet my neighbors across the road don't even have a clue about any of this. I'll go tell them. I went over there and I told them, don't call nine-one-one. Call dispatch. And I gave them the number. If your kids get stuck, call me and I'll pick them up. So new people in town really don't know the things that we all know. Maybe the light company can put a flyer in their light bills to inform them. They have to take part in government. You know, younger people are the, are the basis for this town, and not enough of them are involved. And I hope that happens. But I think that if we give them numbers and we make them more aware of the services we have, it may help. You know, that's, that's the only idea I have.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please. Go ahead, please.
Gail Noell, Eighty-seven Winchester Street. I do go to the selectmen's meetings, and I do take notes. And at the selectmen's meeting on September twenty-fourth, it's on YouTube, Mr. Casvant did come, and he spoke about this whole project and how much it would cost, why, why we need, why we're in this position. So you can watch it on YouTube from September twenty-fourth.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on Article seven? Go ahead, please.
Rachel Herman, Forty-One Pleasant Street. Hey, I saw that YouTube video, and it wasn't very impressive. For this much money, and especially considering that the previous work that was done on the school roof failed, what I'm not seeing or hearing or anything written down about is how is this project going to be managed and overseen and inspected step by step to be sure that the same screw-ups don't happen again, and this money just gets washed down the drain? Apparently, the people who didn't do the work correctly last time are beyond the reach of the law. We can't, the town can't sue them, but we shouldn't let that happen again. What about the town inspector? Can we set this up so the town inspector is coming in on a regular basis and doing a report on the entire project? Or if that's too much for one person, get more than one inspector. But some of this money should be spent on making sure the job gets done correctly so that we don't pay again in five or ten years. I just put a roof on a few years ago. I have a guarantee for over fifty years. It's pretty easy to spend other people's money.
Okay, thank you. Do you have an answer?
Chris Casvant, Superintendent. So thank you for watching the first video, or the first meeting. The second meeting, when I spoke to the advisory committee, that actually came up. So the parts of the roof that have failed are twenty-five years old. So the parts that failed were done over twenty-five years ago. This was before the MSBA, and that's why the, projects like that are why the MSBA actually exists. Because school districts and others were, their projects were not very well done. They were way over cost, and there was no oversight. The MSBA has built in, when the project is done, they have an inspector group, and I'm trying to, I can't remember the name of the group, but they come in and they inspect all the work to make sure that the money obviously was spent correctly, but that the work was done correctly. So, yeah, when this building, or the new portion, when the new portion of the high school was built, that was before the MSBA. And they just don't, if you're going to, if they're going to give you money, which they do through a grant, which would be fifty-nine percent, then they're going to make sure that their money is spent wisely, that, that it's done correctly. And if it's not, they will hold them accountable in the ways that they do, which probably is that they will not pay them until the work is done correctly and on time, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, thank you for that. Go ahead, please.
It's Rachel Herman, Forty-One Pleasant Street. The correct procedure is not to wait until the work is done and then come and inspect it, because then whatever's hidden underneath the done parts are hidden. You have to have an ongoing inspection regime for any big project. Where's the information on that?
Go ahead, please.
Chris Casvant, Superintendent. What I'd like to do is have John Cutler from, who is our OPM from SMMA, come up to explain that process, obviously a lot better than I've been able to do.
Okay, we're gonna just do-
But he is a non, obviously he is a-
He's non-resident. So we'll just do a voice vote on that. All in favor of letting this man speak about it? Say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Okay, go ahead, sir. State your name and title.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Cutler. I'm a project manager for SMMA. So we are your owner's project manager on this. We are contracted with the MSBA, and they randomly assign us projects like yours. I'm actually doing a roof replacement down the street in Gardner as well, same time as you guys. We're just a few months ahead over there. You're pretty much talking about quality control, which is primarily what my firm is responsible for. I have in-house engineers who review all of our drawings. So we have an SD set that's already been produced. We provided a hundred comments back to them. So we have, at the design level, we give them feedback, and then I have site managers that I'm contractually required to put on site anytime there is a contractor on site. In this case, you're going to have a site manager who has thirty years of experience with Commodore Construction. He knows the ins and outs of the industry. You guys are going to be in good hands. But then on top of that, our design team is also responsible for punch list, back punch, reviewing as-built. Contractor is responsible for a level of quality control. We have commissioning agents, testing agents assigned by the MSBA. So there's going to be a lot of hands on this, and then your town inspectors as well. So the process, since your original roof project, roof replacement project, has changed pretty significantly, and that's pretty much why the MSBA exists today and why I'm here today. I hope that answers it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions or comments on Article seven? Okay, going once, going twice. All right, we're going to vote on Article seven?
We're voting to amend.
Yeah, we're voting on the, well, it's the amendment.
That's a, that's a-
Huh?
Yeah.
So we're gonna, yeah, now I'm confused.
So they're voting to accept the amendment?
Yeah.
As, as the amendment.
And then we're gonna vote. Okay, so we're gonna vote to accept-
So the amendment first, which is majority?
Yeah. Okay, so to clear it up, we're going to vote to accept the amendment, which is then going to be, then we'll vote on the motion, the main motion that it's attached to. All right, so we can vote on that now? Yes or no on the amendment? That we, basically, that's Okay, as you can see, fifty-eight yeses and three nos. So the amendment passed. It's a majority vote, and now we'll vote on the main motion. Okay, everyone ready to vote? Please vote now.
The, 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 Okay, just clearing up on a bylaw, so I have to, you wanna pass over on article nine, so we do have to give people a chance in case someone else wants to bring it up.
Oh, okay.
It just, oops, sorry, um, no, we're getting it set up, so we have to vote on the pass over, just so everyone knows that, I'm just getting it set up with the, with the clickers, so that we can vote on it, that's all, it just takes a minute. Okay, I'm being told we're good, so it's a majority vote to pass over, so everyone vote now, if you wanna pass it over, yes, if you don't, no.
Mr. Moderator, please.
Go ahead, please.
Was there a motion properly made and seconded to pass over the, to, to pass over this article? Somebody need that motion seconded?
I don't-
In writing?
No, I don't need it in writing if you're passing over, but I do need a second. Second, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. Now we can go to vote. It's still going? Still open. Okay. Do you gotta hit it again if you already voted or no? Okay, as you can see, uh, vote to pass over was fifty-seven yes, one no, so article nine has been passed over. At, uh, seven thirty-four. Okay, article ten, please.
Article ten, this is the original motion, move that the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to seek special legislation as set forth below, provided, however, that the general court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the board of selectmen is hereby authorized to approve amendments, which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition as follows: enact authorizing annual town meeting as the responsible party on any and all decisions involving fluoridating or not fluoridating the public water supply. Section one, notwithstanding section eight C, chapter one eleven, title sixteen, part one of the general laws or any general of special law to the contrary, the legislative body at annual town meeting with a majority vote shall be authorized to make any and all decisions in regarding to fluoridating or not fluoridating the public water supply. However, should town meeting vote to fluoridate the public water supply, oversight on fluoride dose shall go to the town's board of health. Annual town meeting shall also make decisions on health warning involving water fluoridation and any other decisions involving fluoride in the public water supply. Section two, upon effective date of this act, the legislative body at annual town meeting shall become the responsible party for all matters concerning fluoride in the public water supply. Section three, this act shall take effect upon passage. I'm gonna sign it.
Okay, can I get a second on that while we, second, thank you.
Alright.
Okay, I'll, uh, open up the floor to questions and comments on article ten. Go ahead, please.
Alright, I would like to make a substitute motion for article ten. Move that the town will vote to instruct, and for people who wanna fall around, there was a handout on the tables, it was on the other side for article ten. Move that the town will vote to instruct the board of selectmen to seek special legislation as set forth below, provided, however, that the general court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the board of selectmen is hereby authorized to approve amendments, which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition as follows: enact authorizing that any and all decisions involving supplementation of the public water supply with fluoride shall be the sole purview of the Templeton Light and Water Department. Section one, as fluoridation of water supplies is not required to make water potable, an individual dose is uncontrollable when fluoride is delivered through community water, and many susceptible subpopulations have valid medical reason not to consume fluoride, and avoiding fluoride when it is added to the town water is expensive for residents. The town of Templeton wishes to follow the alternative approach to fluoridation regulation that grants authority to water commissions and departments, as is done in Swansea and Sudbury, rather than follow chapter one eleven, section eight C, which gives the governing authority to the MassDPH through its operating arms of local boards of health. Section two, upon effective date of this act, the Templeton Light and Water Department shall become the responsible party for all matters concerning fluoride in the public water supply. Section three, this act shall take effect upon passage.
Can I get a second? Thank you, alright, and I already have a signed copy.
Thank you.
Um, I'd like to open up the floor to questions and comments on article ten.
Want to talk?
The amended motion.
You looking for a second? I second.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please.
Hi, Elizabeth Crocker, six eighty-nine Baltimore Road. I'm representing myself, the Board of Health, and the Bomac, which is the Better Oral Health Coalition of Massachusetts. We still all continue to support community water fluoridation, and we make this decision using evidence-based facts, of which there are over sixty-five hundred scientific, peer-reviewed studies and documents that provide data that overwhelmingly support the safety and effectiveness of fluoride for more than eighty years. It has been in our water since nineteen fifty-one, it's still one of the ten public health achievements of the twentieth century, as it is the single most cost-effective, cost-saving, public health measure to prevent tooth decay. This petition kinda surprises me, it's completely different than the one that was originally there. Putting the Light and Water Department in charge, okay. I spoke with Scott last week from the Water Department, and it surprised me that he told me that they no longer wanted to add fluoride to the water. The debate has been going on since two thousand and eleven, the people have always decided to keep fluoridation as it is. Until this year, the Water Department and the Board of Health have worked in collaboration to support this effort. Honestly, when he said that it was due to finances, although he trusted the science, they didn't wanna do it anymore 'cause it wasn't safe for the water operators. That kinda left me speechless, I really didn't know what to say to him, but I've had some time to think about it. Um, I also read the citizens' portal on November fifth, and per Scott, the cost of the additive is a rubs fee of about eight thousand dollars per year. That's less than a dollar per person per year. It's interesting, I don't think that's expensive. Um, I know there's some upgrades coming down the road by two thousand twenty-seven, I have a few questions about that. Are these upgrades just for the fluoride that's added, or are they for all the additives that go into the water? I can tell you that the dental savings per person per year that are avoided from dental treatments is about forty-four dollars and sixty-two cents per person. If you multiply that times the population of the town, that's about three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, that would become disposable income that's in the pockets of the citizens, if there is fluoridation is discontinued, that would be a big cost. That doesn't even include the increased visits to the ER for tooth-related pain, um, increased hospital admissions for systemic problems originating from untreated tooth decay, or the massive unpaid bills, much like some of the unpaid bills that we have for the Water Department, that go to the hospitals. They go unpaid, then those hospitals increase their charges to other people to compensate for that. All those charges are increased by our insurance carriers. Our insurance carriers then pass it on, those people on Medicaid, et cetera, the cycle goes on. The cost of fluoride doesn't sound so bad when you look at it that way. I spoke with Scott about why it was, or he spoke with me, I should say, that all of a sudden it was dangerous for our water operators, that they had to use PPE, I don't know, I use that in my everyday job, things like gloves, goggles, face shields, respirators, protective clothing, maybe some steel-toed shoes, I don't know. These are guidelines set by CDC, OSHA, and the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health. They're not just for the fluoride additives. In fact, it's my understanding that chlorine is by far the worst and the most dangerous additive. It's a toxic corrosive greenish-yellow gash, it's irritating to the eyes and respiratory system. We use it to disinfect, to sanitize water, and industrial wastewater as well, sanitizing against microbes, as stated in our town water report. These are microorganisms that cause disease, and its use is because of its rate of reactivity. My question, again, I have another one, is would we take that out of the water as well?
Well, this article is only on fluoride, it has nothing to do with chlorine.
Right, I, I understand that, but I'm trying to point out that-
Point of order, it's off-topic.
Yes, that, that was-
Okay, off-topic, my question was, is the equipment that we're going to have to get for all the ingrate additives that we put in the water? Um, by the way, this morning I checked, the American Water Works Association still supports fluoride. At this time, Mass. General Law says it's not the decision of the Water Department to discontinue fluoride, and the PPE is part of their job to dawn it. Fluoride does continue to be effective across all age and socioeconomic levels throughout our society, if we choose to discontinue this, what are we going to do to help the people who don't have the availability for this? SNAP benefits have been in the news a lot lately.
Yeah, they have, but this, this is about fluoride, you're-
Well, it's about fluoride. Do you know in SNAP you can't buy a toothbrush, toothpaste, or floss?
Well, no, but I've-
Yes.
Well, it's a two-minute rule, I was letting you go a little bit, but now you're way off-topic, so I'm sorry, but-
Well anyways, I'd like to ask the question, um, I guess I'd ask that you just let this, leave this up to the Health Commissioner and the Board of Health, and not pass it on to someone else, 'cause I don't believe they have the authority to, or perhaps they don't have the knowledge of the health benefits.
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
It, it's insulting, her last comment was insulting to the people generally speaking.
Well, she's allowed to say it, I mean, yeah, so, no, there's no, there's no shouting, oh, please, just, you, you were allowed to speak, she is allowed to speak, if you didn't like what she said, well, that's kinda the way, it, it just, she's allowed to speak. Could, I have the next person, please?
Cindy Catterett, Three Grand View Terrace, Templeton, Massachusetts. Um, I'm a registered dental hygienist, I've been a dental hygienist for forty-plus years, and I work in dental public health. Um, my question is, why are you considering changing the authority from the Health Department to the Water Department?
Does anyone have any answer on that? If, if you could answer, go ahead, Julie.
The reason for changing from the Board of Health to the Water Department is because the Water Department are the ones at most risk, okay? The Water Department, workers are at risk of inhalation, fluoride is extremely dangerous chemical, and the Water Department is also going to incur the costs, so if the people who are in charge and responsible for putting it into the water should also oversee whether or not they wanna put it in the water or not. Thank you.
Okay.
May I, may I respond?
You have, you have another question?
I do.
Go ahead.
Um, so, this is my first time here in front of all of you. My last ti- I was at the last Board of Health meeting, I believe a year, it was probably last year's fall meeting, and, um, I believe that the, the water operator was present for that meeting, there was also a, um, there was a, an article in opposition of fluorid- fluoridating the water, and at that time, the water operator was in, um, support of continuing with fluoridating the water. My question is, what's changed between then and now? As I understand it, these, um, measures have been in place to protect water operators for quite some time, where they have to dawn PPE in order to, um, carry out their, their job, just as I, as a dental hygienist, I'm required to dawn PPE to protect not only myself, but my patients. Um, so I just would like to understand what's changed, and what's brought this to the, to the, um, to the, to the urgency of changing things now.
I don't know if anyone has any answer to that, there's, someone does? If you have any answer, sir, appreciate it.
Scott Schwinger, nine Vernon Street, uh, superintendent of the Templeton Water Department. Uh, I'll start with the PPE, uh, 'cause that's an easy one. When you're at your job being a dental hyd- dentist, do you have to handle a caustic powder? Because that's what we have to touch every day. It's an airborne caustic powder, product of China.
Yeah, and really, if we could just stick with the, the, I understand PPE was brought up, but I don't see that it really relates to this article as much as the, is, that it's about fluoride in the water or not, what they're doing, I understand you work for the Water Department, so I'm gonna give you a little leniency, but you understand what I'm saying?
To answer the, the biggest part of the question is, we are not here to debate whether fluoride is good or bad for your dental health. That's not the stand that the Water Department is taking. The stand is, by DEP regulation, by two thousand twenty-seven, we have to sink about eighty thousand dollars into just the fluoride systems in, in the town. With the rising costs of everything, we're just looking at ways to trim the fat. The fluoride does not make the water safer, does not make it cleaner, does not make it potable. It's not mandatory to make clean, safe water, whereas the chlorine is, um, kills bacteria in the water, nobody wants bacteria in the water. That's the, the biggest part of where we stand right now, is just the economics of it. So, you know, eighty thousand dollars, ninety thousand dollars by two thousand twenty-seven, that's, that's a lot of money for us, and we're just trying to- It's, yeah, it's a safety because of the toxic chemical, and it's a economic, uh, topic. I mean, that's the bulk of it.
Okay, well, thank you for that answer, we got, um, actually, thank you, and next Liz.
Yeah, okay. Liz Toth, Gray Road, uh, there are a couple of things I'd like to point out, the last time Ms. Crocker had referenced sixty-five hundred different, um, papers, when I did a records report to her afterwards, and it, it's basically- report to her afterwards, and it's basically, I'm saying that her information is not accurate, because when I asked for any of that information, she was not able to provide it before, and for her to reference it now, in my opinion, is inappropriate. Second thing is that when it comes to fluoride, babies, parents are told, don't let your young babies use the toothpaste with fluoride in it. It is contraindicated. So, how you can say it's safe, and you don't know what the actual dosage is for the people who do need to be drinking the fluoridated water, your quote of $1 per resident is also inaccurate, because there are, first of all, more than 8,000 residents in the town of Templeton, and not everybody is on town water. So, please, get your facts straight.
Go ahead, please.
Gail Noel. Correct me if I'm wrong, but as long as I've been coming to town meetings, we have had a fluoride question, yes or no, all the time. And so, the article wants the town meeting to have authority, and we already do, and we've already voted on it, time and time again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please.
Cindy Catterett. So, I just wanted to ask about the uncollected water bills that are outstanding. I believe it's in the amount of...
One gallon.
That's not allowed.
No, we're talking about the fluoride, whether it's going to stay in the water...
I was responding to what Scott said about the finances, the financial aspect of trying to trim the fat.
But it's not really in the scope of what this is about. I understand, he was trying to say...
As a taxpayer, I'm concerned that there's, and as a dental professional, I'm concerned that there is $350,000 plus of uncollected water bills.
That's sore.
Yeah, right here.
We're not together. That's sore.
Okay.
So, all right.
Thank you.
I believe the, you were next. Go ahead, please.
Amanda Mattingly-McGee, Patriots Road, Templeton. I saw this question on the warrant, and I did some research. I've heard about this debate for a really long time. The fluoride is really not been proven to be unsafe. It has actually been proven to be safe over and over again, so many studies. What has been also proven in scientific studies is the health benefits. This is a major public health win. It's been proven for decades. Our teeth are healthier for it, and all our other systems that are connected to our teeth and our gums are healthier for it. Please don't take the fluoride out of our water, and I think that the Public Health Department should continue oversight of it. Public health, that is their job. So, I would like them to continue looking out for us, because that is their expertise. I really haven't heard any evidence about why it's so dangerous, so I guess my question is if the petitioners are going to present any evidence about why it's so dangerous. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Tom Inston, 49 Highland Ave., Baldenville. Just a real quick, short story. My father helped put this fluoride in the water, because he lost all his teeth. My mother lost all her teeth. My sister lost all of her teeth, in one form or another, because the fluoride wasn't there. I came along, 75 years later. I do not have a cavity in my head. Even the dentist I go to cannot believe that everything that was in there got pulled out, and I still have all my teeth. Now, that's just the fluoride in the water. That does not take into effect things like brushing your teeth, and Listerine, and all these other things. So, I don't understand why we're going to let a public health issue go by the boards, because some people don't think that it's helping them. Everybody in this room, from the town of Templeton, I don't care who it is, is drinking fluoridated water today. Oh, hang on. There are things out in the market where you can buy the fluoride tabs. Whether we do it or not, that is almost a personal decision. Agree? Yeah? But, in my case, I have gum disease. I have to have the fluoride. So, a lot of this is which way you want to look at the problem. I think leaving the fluoride in, and we've heard everything, is probably the better answer, because my children don't have a cavity in their head either, and they were born and raised and bred in this town. So, from a personal standpoint, I've lived it, I've helped grow it, I've seen it, it works. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please.
April Hoover, 24 Meadowbrook Lane. I think that consumption of fluoride should be a personal choice. It is in so many other products. You can buy it in your toothpaste, your mouthwash, things of that sort. Don't they even do the fluoride treatments at the schools now? Every so often? I mean, you can substitute it anywhere else. I think that it needs to be removed and let it be a personal choice, as to whether or not you want to consume it.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Julie Farrell, 24 Myrtle Street, Baldenville. I have some key facts that I would like to go over, that I have taken from this document, which is online. If anyone would like a copy of this document, or any other documents regarding fluoride, I have put a sticker on the handout that I have with my email address, and I will give those documents to you. I will send you the lawsuit. I'll send you the National Toxicology Program's report on fluoridation, and how it reduces IQ in children. That's science. I didn't write it. It's from the National Toxicology Report. The facts, 95% of the world's population is fluoridation-free.
Excuse me, I was, could I have a point of order for a minute?
Excuse, I'm sorry, what's your...
Well, Elizabeth Crocker, you told me that I was out of order speaking against. This has nothing to do with this.
I'm reading key facts, facts about water fluoridation.
And let me just be clear, she...
Does that have anything to do with the article?
Yes, she's getting to, and let me just, so everyone understands, she made the motion. It's her article. I always give the person who has the main motion a little extra time, because they, it's their article. So, go, continue, Julie.
All right. 95% of the world's population is fluoridation-free, which is what this article is about, water fluoridation. Okay? Fluoride is not an essential nutrient. Your body does not need it. When you accept wa, if your, water is fluoridated, you cannot control the dose. You don't know how much water I drink. No one knows how much water everybody drinks, and it's not just the water you're drinking, it's the water you're cooking with. If you cook pasta, if you cook rice, it absorbs the water. If you go to Dunkin' Donuts and get a coffee, it's probably fluoridated, okay? You don't know what the dose is. Fluoridation is a significant waste of taxpayer money. Cities spend tens of millions of dollars on fluoridation equipment and chemicals.
Point of order, what's your point of order?
Isn't the article about changing the authority of who's going to make the decision? Not the benefits of fluoride, but who has the authority?
I'll give you a little more time.
Thank you. All right. Fluoridation is a significant waste of taxpayer money. Cities spend tens of millions of dollars on fluoridation equipment and chemicals, and even the smallest communities spend tens of thousands of dollars. It is estimated that 99% of all tap water is used for purposes other than drinking. That means 99% of fluoridation chemicals, representing hundreds of thousands of tons of silico fluoride waste, goes directly into the environment and watershed, and this takes funds away for more effective oral health strategies. Sorry. There is now very strong evidence that fluoride damages both the fetal and infant brain at levels used in artificially fluoridated areas. Over 400 studies have found that fluoride is a neurotoxin, a chemical that can damage the brain. This research includes over 200 animal studies, showing that prolonged exposure of varying levels of fluoride can damage the brain, particularly when coupled with iodine deficiency or aluminum excess. In 79 human studies linking low to moderately high fluoride exposures with reduced intelligence.
Point of order, how...
The National Institutes of Health.
I'm going to give her one more minute.
One more minute?
Yeah, one more minute.
She's been sitting here for how many? We're not talking...
Well, okay, that's, that's, that is my ruling. I'm giving her one more minute, please.
Move the question.
Thank you.
I am not just...
Hold on, this gentleman here...
Move the question. What, your discussion about all the, whether we should have four or not?
Want it done? It's done.
Okay.
What I'd like to say is, the Board of Health, I hope, are educated. The rest of us really aren't. There are a few people that look up all whatever Kennedy says, whatever, but I think we should leave it...
The question is, she moved the question, so we are going to vote, we're going to vote on move the question.
Removing the question is what, the discussion of whether to fluoride or not?
No.
Point of order.
The question is, so, when we move the question, we'll vote on moving the question, which will mean, if it passes, it means we will go directly to vote on the, on the substitute amendment. If it doesn't pass, we'll go back to more discussion on it. That's what move the question will do.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, go.
To this chair, so I can speak, and Julie was speaking, and now I'm not going to have a chance to speak.
Can I?
I was waiting in line, right here.
Yeah. A point of order? I thought the person who was speaking can't ask to move the question. Someone else asked it.
I believe they actually can.
Yeah. I'm surprised. I told you four, they won't let you talk. Have you done this to me before, Friday town meeting?
All right, let's...
I haven't.
We're going to, we're going to vote on move the question. Hold on. One second. We're going to double-check on this to make sure. Okay, so, move the question, we're going to vote on it. It has to, it's going to, it has to pass by two-thirds, and if it does pass, then we will go directly to a vote on the substitute motion.
On the amended motion.
On the amended motion.
Yeah, the substitute motion. Okay. Is it all set?
All right, at this time, we can vote on move the question. If you, if it passes, we will go to the substitute amended motion. If it doesn't pass, we'll continue discussion. Go ahead and vote, please. Okay, as you can see, it was 45 yes, 12 no. It was a two-thirds majority, so move the question passed at 9:0, I'm sorry, 8:05. Okay, we're going to go to vote on the substitute amended motion on Article 10. Whether to amend it, whether to amend it. All right? And that's majority vote, right? And that's a majority vote. Say, okay, we can vote on that now?
I'm voting to amend.
Okay, as you can see, on the substitute, it failed 31 to 27, at 9:06. I'm sorry, 8:06, thank you. I never change my watch. Okay, now we're going to vote on the original motion, Article 10. That's a majority vote. All right, if you look, you can see that the main motion, Article 10, failed 38 to 22, All right, can I get a motion to dissolve the meeting? Can I get a second? Thank you. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Okay, this meeting's over. Thank you very much.
Can you close it, Charlie?
But I know, people are...
Yes, please return the clickers. Please, please.